Pleasant to meet you through the quiet of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right, so we got everybody here tonight, but Jeff and Jeff's father passed away here the other day, so our condolences to him and his family and as they go through this trying time, so anyway, but he won't be with us this evening, obviously. With the paperwork, so any changes on the regular agenda, guys? Everything's good? All right, I'll look for a motion to accept. Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, who does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries, well, let's go to the consent agenda, any questions, concerns on that one? I was gonna look for a motion to accept.
All motion to approve the consent agenda.
Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second? Sarah does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, the council meeting, meeting minutes from last time, any questions, concerns, changes, corrections, et cetera, et cetera? Okay, Naomi makes a motion to accept them, can I get a second? Sarah, there's a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, public comment, anybody think, anybody got anything you wanna chit chat about tonight? I'll just say, has anybody got anything you wanna chit chat about tonight, we're at the public comment part of the show here? Okay? Right? Yep, ninety, I think, has got that one for Wall Avenue, yep. Yeah, if you got anything on Wall Avenue, that's where we'll do that one, anything non-Wall Avenue related? Anybody wanna talk about, okay? Sheriff's update, we'll do that next time, I don't think we got anything on that that I saw anyway, so Jim, sixty-fourth roundabout, what do you got?
Yes, so the county has sent out a mailer on the County Road Seventeen and sixty-fourth Avenue Roundabout. They're holding a public input meeting, a public information meeting, open house, on people ten from five to eight P M. In the forest fire hall, if you don't believe there is any type of formal presentation, other than just stand and have us representatives from the county. Here to take questions about anything that residents would handle, needing access to D J R and construction of the Roundabout and the replacement of the bridge of the Cheyenne River.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that?
Uh, second thing we have, nothing on the open house, the second thing we have, the cost share office, we were presented with a cost share agreement by, from the highway department. Uh, the legal department is working on a review of that, we did get a breakdown of the costs from the highway department as to what the city would be responsible for, roughly, it's a total of three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. Three hundred twenty-two thousand twenty dollars roughly of that, uh, there is some subgrade preparation, which was the six rounds, whatever dollars, or fifty-seven, or well, uh, Veterans Boulevard prepping that road for graveling, there's seventy-nine thousand two dollars in gravel. And the remainder, maybe, the remainder of that is in streetlights, we talked about that, going from sixty-fourth Avenue all the way up to the north, to the, um,
The Roundabout.
Second Avenue, with streetlights, can you read that?
We're all in your crops by the river there.
Yeah. So that's the remainder of that, so, uh, once the authorities have had a chance to go through that cost share agreement, we'll present that back to you, but I wanted to give you an update on that, when you do have it. We are gonna reach out to Fargo and see if there's any opportunity to get the cost share since fifty-seventh, that Veterans Boulevard is half in there, it's half in Morris's. But, uh, we just got people this year, but we can go in and come chance to pull it like Fargo yet, so, once we get the cost share agreement, we're all, they're calling, we'll get, we can see if we can get something out of Fargo as well, so.
Yeah, I'll be curious to see what Fargo says about that, cause it'd be nice if they'd help us on that one being part of us in their territory, but.
Jim, can you remind me, um, when you talk about streetlights? Is, is that just a direct cost of this project, or is there an assessment district, or, or?
It is a.
The Porsche, the streetlights?
All of the city pays for that, it's up to the owner, but it is considered part of that project, being that it is a county highway project, there is no assessment district, because they don't assess their projects.
Okay.
We didn't do an assessment district first project, because we did not anticipate our cost to be rough, so, this is one where I'd be proposing to council, once we have that cost share agreement brought forward, say, come from sales tax, because that would be a fitting project for sales tax. Uh, that's where we had some of our cost share on the previous roundabout was some from sales tax, some from assessment district, but this one is gonna be more of a straight-up sales tax.
Okay.
So, what in, uh, next, the whole project got, is five, six million dollars, and now the horse would be responsible for three hundred and twenty-two. Basically.
And that was brought up as a safety concern, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we've got lots of dollars on lighting that corridor, because it feels so dark, so that's just been, it has, it has developing develops on both sides of that, with lighting and the going up on second.
Gives us more of a chance, gets a little senior banners up too. Um.
The discussion, right, so in March, on March second of twenty twenty, West Fargo City planning zone presented the Wilds twentieth edition, at that time, it was discussed with the horse city council, um, impacts on horse, because of the twentieth edition of the Wilds. At that time, there was a discussion of significant increase in traffic through the Greyhawk subdivision, and then by the September twenty-first meeting of twenty twenty, the city was made by the city council to install a gate on that sixtieth Avenue between Wilds and the Greyhawk Edition, this is, this is a city street, this is public within, uh, the right of way, so, um, after September of twenty twenty, that gate was installed, with the Roundabout construction going on this summer, the, uh, access to Greyhawk, the disagreement limited due to the cutting off of ten seventeen sixty-fourth Avenue, so, it was before we opened the gate all traffic in the Greyhawk, get through, if they get up to fifty-seven, it's fifty-second Avenue on eighth eighth roads versus having one diversion road or backtracks, it'd be, you know, gravel, so, uh, the first topic was obviously opening the gate to the traffic, and then the second was the entirety of the council, we moved the gate if it's still be, this due to being a public street, so, um, I did get a last minute email from, oh, call and email from all the residents up in that area, who requested that it stay up in the long term, wasn't afraid of it being opened up for the construction access, but in the long term, she would like it to be, to be, to be, to be, um, or be closed.
That's a city, well, public.
Sixth Street, yeah, sixtieth Avenue.
And is that the city's gate, gate of song?
So, it is.
Yeah, we put that one up, there's gonna be too much construction traffic that was going through Greyhawk, and that road had absolutely, you know, was not built to handle pretty much anything over a pickup, from what we understood, so, I mean, it was crumbling the road, so we're trying, was trying to preserve the road.
And after the Wilds twenties, twenty.
Well, this thing, yeah, this was two thousand.
So there's, like, it's the. No construction traffic anymore now?
More subdivision in more additions in the wilds, they're getting company that's in southwest corner.
So, is this gate leaving anymore?
That residence is a big upset, it depends on who has, yep. So, yeah, a lot of the residents are being, sending this traffic coming through there, uh, if you remove the gate, that's it, road will have more traffic, it's gonna be opened up, and more cars come through, um, at that time, when that gate went up, and it blew a core a little bit, I believe, that was a couple years ago, and that was, uh, concerns of trap, more traffic, but, once ninth continues down sixty-fourth, which is a project that we're probably ready to go, and also later this year of discussion, but once that will connect on sixty-fourth, then, makes sense to have that gate probably removed, because majority of traffic would cut off, I can go on sixty-fourth, um, a lot of concerns of that kind were construction traffic. But, that was, it's also sort of being built.
It was easy access for him.
Yeah, access, right.
Jim, do you see a lot of construction, I mean, if you're thinking ahead here a little bit, though, do you see a lot of construction vehicles actually going through Greyhawk this year because of the sixty-fourth Avenue? Yeah, that's what I mean.
Get you, let's see, the sixty-fourth will be cut off.
Yeah, so that's, I don't, I don't really think there's gonna be a lot of construction traffic through there, not like it was a couple years ago, when they were all over it, but.
The main concern that I got, was in fact that, um, the Wild was in the forest high school um, territory, clearly deserved a lot, high school kid driving fast through a neighborhood with outside locks, with, yourself, rural sections.
But with all the construction going on, do you think they'd actually take that path of most resistance?
So, the Roundabout is scheduled to be completely completed in two months.
Okay. The bridge.
Bridge replacement, it definitely much lighter than.
So, when are, when are they anticipating starting this Roundabout project? I'm just, cause I wanna be realistic here, is the end of July, based upon what we had talked about earlier, is that still even feasible, or if that's just a pipe dream at this point? I know, but it's the delay of game here.
So, the completion date for the Roundabout is obviously eighteen plus, their schedule hasn't done to the end of July.
Right.
Starting, obviously, further dependent.
I know. That's what I seen recalled, yeah, because I know, I thought it was mid-April, that's why I was questioning this.
Okay. And they will be accessing that site from that side, for this.
Okay.
Pre-con, and it's leading to the interstate, the fifty-second Avenue, forty-five, two, seven, six avenues coming. For April sixteen would be their traffic controls start.
Yeah.
What, what's the timeframe again, you mentioned that, that Brenton, the detour, or the other, is gonna be coming to us, I mean, we haven't made our decision on what we're doing with that yet.
We don't have a set date, I.
Okay.
Way to break that, it's just a project that's been here for a while, um, that also is, uh, the land in that area within horse, which is out in the wilds, is all by developer, and they've asked, you know, they move forward their development, we have seen important conversation right now on it, we're looking at utilities that they're getting, so, it's, it's been a basically been table for a while, until, until your other areas could be addressed.
Well, to me, I think that's a big component in any decision on this, on this gate.
Well.
Ti- timing and decision on it.
Timing wise, you're not very happy, the biggest question is, have it gate open or not, for the Roundabout construction? Cause the continuation nine down sixty-fourth is not gonna be done before they start breaking down the Roundabout, so, really, the only question right now, is even have it open or not? Then the second question is, do you remove the gate, or keep it there for the time being?
So, right now, I'd say we keep the gate there, but I was wondering if we should leave it open, or open for, and just see how it goes, and if we start getting the construction traffic or something, if if anomalies are starting to go through there and causing problems in that area, we can always close the gate again. So, because we know what happened last time with this thing, and that's why I just wanna, I don't wanna remove it yet, until we get completion, and get that ninth street in. But I think if, you know, if we'd wanna try it and just see, just to help, try and make some convenience, but I mean, if we start getting a lot of traffic through there, that's causing problems in the neighborhood, we can always close that gate again. Right, that's what I mean for access, so that's, I mean, I'd like to at least try it and see, and then if the residents complain and don't wanna have that gate open, I mean, then we can address it again, I think that.
Do we have to make the decision tonight, I mean, what's the timeliness of the matter?
Start on the sixteenth of April, I think, or, I don't know, till down the intersection.
I mean, it might be kinda nice to hear from a few more residents in the area, did you say one reached out to you?
Their options are from, close, they'd be taking the ground road out to eighty first, they're going north or south from that direction.
When the Roundabout is closed.
Three about three about two and a half to three miles on gravel.
Wasn't there an issue taking that?
Or two, two miles on gravel.
Don't they give him step, it was?
No, it was just the, the condition of it, once, so, seemed that would be good enough, yeah, if you maintain daily.
Wasn't, minimizing road, and we put gravel on, trying to make it work.
So, be, just open the gate or give them a paid option, to get out with it.
Are, the Greyhawk, our Greyhawk residents?
Yes.
Because then they would travel into the wilds.
They could.
Okay.
It gives them two ways in and out.
Yep, for now, while with.
They come in from the west, through gravel roads, or they go through the Wild subdivision, in West Fargo, out from fifty-second, so they would have two ways in and out.
I don't, I don't see it being a bad thing to have the gate open, at least, we can see where it goes, if, if it starts becoming a problem, we can always close it again, but I don't removal of the gate would be really premature at this point, I think. Sarah, what's your thoughts on this one?
No, I'm to that, I'm just questioning, like.
Yeah.
Being there, but it sounds like there's some history there.
Yeah.
I don't disagree for the time being, let's go ahead and open it up, just to give some residents some ease, and then see how it goes.
Yep.
Hopefully, there's not a bunch of trucks that try to run, run around through the area.
I'm hoping not to, Naomi, what do you think?
I mean, if I was in that area, I guess I would want another way to get to where I need to go, instead of being frustrated with the gravel, but I don't think we should take the, the gate down, if it's gonna cause issues.
I think, like I said, it gotta be very premature at this point, till we kinda feel everybody's satisfied.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Stephanie?
I agree, uh, maybe on a temporary basis, but I'd be very interested in hearing what the residents think, uh, once the gates open for a little bit, to see what, what the feedback is, before we make any final decision.
I'm sure they'll let us know, though, if it's bad, I mean, that they've been pretty good about keeping us in.
Yeah, definitely wanna hear that, if there's any residency, I mean, we wanna hear that, so.
Um, okay, so we wanna make a motion, keep the, or to open the gate, but not remove it at this point? Okay, Sarah makes a motion, could I get a second?
Sure.
Okay, Naomi does a second, all right, so, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, now we're onto Wall Avenue. Lucas, how do you wanna start this, then?
So, totally up to you, uh, Mr. Mr. Duncan, but, uh, there's some residents for the Wall Avenue project that asked questions, comments that they, uh, would like to voice to the city council, I should note that's, maybe a good opportunity for that, considering you know, we had a deadline to respond, uh, to the city's most recent, uh, revised offer, uh, as of last week. Um, so, tonight is, is that opportunity to discuss with you, the questions and comments that they still have for this project, again, the city is trying to purchase right away for this project, and so that's, is the discussion on at hand.
Okay, how many residents here wanna talk about Wall Avenue, or how, about where they're at, okay? Let's try and keep it to two to three minutes, folks, I don't, otherwise, we're gonna be here all night, so keep it, uh, short and brief, and get to your point, okay? Whoever wants to start, can go ahead and come on up here and start, and we'll go through these one at a time.
Speak up soon.
We got a mic here, so why don't you come up over here, if I can pick you up?
My name's John Colvin, I'm at five fifty Westbrook Drive, um, right along Boris, there, uh, Wall Avenue there, everybody knows where it is. Um, one of the things that I have, and I know my fellow residents up and down Wall Avenue there have, is a real issue with the communication that's going on. So, what, uh, I propose, and I did on Friday, albeit very short notice, um, I had a discussion with Mike and said, I think that the, the only reasonable step is to try to have a committing from the city council, you know, two members, as in not create a quorum meet with the landowners, attorneys involved, because even at the two minutes per person, we're not even to scratch the surface of our questions. Uh, we have received poor communication, we've received miscommunication, and we've each seemed to have received different communication when asking about the same question. Uh, I think that the road needs to be done, it's at that point. Um, it's none of our fault, so to speak, that that road in the condition, it needs to be done. But we're really suffering the brunt of that project being done, so, for me, I've just got a few things written down, but I really think if we're gonna be productive and coming to a resolution to this, I think that it's in, within the city's power to form a committee. Again, not to create a quorum, but to create a committee, and have attorneys present from both sides and really talk about this, and really get some answers to our questions, cause right now, they're all over the place, as of when did we speak, Mike, I got it over here?
Uh, probably Thursday.
Thursday, uh, it was, uh, and my apologies, it wasn't a good conversation, but I'm just at that point, we don't know where we are, uh, according to Mike, there's still a moving target. According to Ann, and our attorney, and Lucas, the project's done, the project's set, we don't know what the project is. Is the road staying the same elevation, is the road being lowered? I still have draining concerns with my property, I have valuation concerns with my property. And one of the main things for me is, we seem to be compensated for about fifty percent of the property that is being taken, at, is still not a fair value, in my opinion. Uh, real quick, little bit something about me, and I'm not trying to brag, but you all already know me. I'm a real estate broker, I've been in real estate since nineteen ninety-eight, I've been a managing broker of three real estate companies, and I'm also an owner and a primary instructor for the Academy of Real Estate Professionals. Great state of North Dakota thinks I know what I'm talking about, cause they've certified me to teach that to broker students, and new students getting a real estate license. So I have a really solid background in this, I've talked to several appraisers that I know from working in the industry, they don't agree with the value at all. So, the, the concern for me seems to be value, the impact on my property. What trees are being taken, and understanding real estate law, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lucas, when you buy the land, you buy the improvements on the land. And from what I'm hearing, depending on the conversation, I'm being compensated for maybe a couple of these, a couple of those. Not the entire property, when you purchase the land, you're purchasing all improvements on that land too, and those improvements have value. So, in my personal opinion, uh, first off, I'm grateful you reduced the right of way, but it still hasn't changed the impact on my property. With my property, I'm losing about thirty-five hundred cubic feet of water retention in the spring. The ditch is being filled in, it's being graded right back to my drain field. And we all live here, that, uh, those culverts and catch bases will not open until well into the thaw. Nowhere for that water to go, except for on my drain field, according to Cass County, uh, uh, Environmental Health, I've spoken with Aaron over there. He doesn't like the project, and he said, we're the only game in town, if it affects my drain field by North Dakota state law, I'm within two hundred, my property line is within two hundred, uh, feet of a city sanitary sewer, I cannot repair, I cannot replace, I cannot relocate my sanitary, my, my septic system. So, for my two minutes worth, I mean, I hope I'm expressing, we wanna get to a resolution on this, but by the North Dakota State Attorney General, we are due fair compensation. And we're also due, if in the future, something from this project affect, affects our property, we're due a remedy from that. And I don't think that we've got enough fair and accurate information from anybody to make an accurate decision, we were asked for a counter offer. But when the project is a moving target, and the values seem to change, and the value for fee simple estate, that's what we own, the dirt we own is fee simple, it's being split out, well, this has an easement on it, and this does not have an easement. The area that easement on is still fee simple, it is still my wife and I's property, and everybody sitting in here that's affected by that. We're due just compensation for that, not eleven cents a square foot. Uh, if you can find me property to buy for eleven cents a square foot, let me know. These are the issues that we still have with the project. If we can meet, and maybe have a discussion about these things, and try to come up with fair and just compensation, as the North Dakota State Attorney General states in these eminent domain of these public use projects, I think we can move forward, but we haven't gotten enough accurate and consistent information to even give you a counter offer.
Okay, John, I got it, I got it, where you're at here, Jim, do you want, or Lucas, do you guys wanna just address any of that real quick, I mean, we've had conversations back and forth. Uh, yeah, I've been privy to all of mine, I'll admit that, you know, with you guys, and what those, all that, but we have had a couple meetings among us with this, so, I mean, we kinda know where we were at, and we came up with, what, ten, fifteen days ago here, we had another meeting to talk about this. So, what we talked about in that meeting was conveyed to all the residents, correct? All right, so you guys got a letter from the city here within the last week, last, last week, right, on what we were?
We got a letter with options, but we don't know what the options are, we don't know what option is at play.
Do we have a copy of that letter, any?
It says, option A is with, um, road elevation staying the same, more trees being purchased, and I, but you gotta understand it's not just the trees, when you buy the real estate, when you buy fee simple from us you're buying all improvements on that, including the value of those trees. And what I'm seeing is I'm being kinda hit and miss, okay, maybe my armor maples, I'm terrible, and Michael could probably correct me, armor, however you pronounce it. Somewhat compensated for that, but I still have sixteen, sixty-foot trees in that property. I still have, depending on, and this was a conversation with Mike, half our property, I snowblew down there, we had a property visit, I said, are these stakes accurate? Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, something like this. I got pretty big arms, that's at least two feet, if those stakes are two feet off, I could stand to lose another thirteen evergreens in that right of way. So, the letter that was sent out, it was delivered to us from N, there's two options on there, one was lowering the road which still doesn't, I mean, that thirty-five hundred, and it's a ballpark of water retention being displaced. It's still not getting that water moving down towards the Cheyenne diversion, still causing an impact on our property. Option two was lowering the road, and okay, now we're not gonna buy any trees, but you're still buying the property. And by state law, get it correct.
If the city's buying any property from you, yes, the city has the right to the trees, so I don't know what's, this is hard to, to go point by point in all this.
No, I know, I'm just, my concern was, my concern, we got a letter out this week, so everybody was aware of what we, what we had.
City sent an email last week.
Right, and that's what that's doing, okay.
And so, so as far as, you know, whatever the city's purchasing, and city's purchasing right away, uh, anything outside of the thirty-three, thirty-three foot stash area right away. Uh, the city will be compensating for trees that are in that area, if the trees are within the thirty-three feet, the city is not compensating for that, it's public right away.
Right.
Under state law.
That's a standard rule, right away.
I get it, whatever the, the city is purchasing, yes, you are correct, the city has the ability to leave that tree up, take that tree down, uh, whatever it desires.
Yeah, once they buy the property, the tree's theirs, they can do whatever they want.
Correct.
But in my offer, according to Mike, for my trees, it was the armor maples and three pine trees. And Mike, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, he sent me a picture and a text of the three pine trees he's taking, that would be taken as part of the project, there's no pine trees there. But there's a lot of other trees within that boundary line that aren't being compensated for at all. So you can see where I'm pumping the brakes on that, and I really think the most productive thing we can do as a group.
John, did you send those pictures to, through your attorney, so that our attorney saw them, I mean, you, you're going through an attorney, correct?
What pictures?
Uh, you said they didn't match the pine.
Oh, that, that particular one, I did not, but she has absolutely everything else, including all my detailed notes on our conversations.
So I just wanna make sure that we've got that as well, though, okay?
But I really feel that if we wanna come to a positive resolution and get moving with this project it's reasonable for the city to appoint a committee, again, not to create a quorum. But a committee, and I've been on city council, I've been on a lot of committees, just to meet with us, with Lucas, our attorney and try to get this figured out, because right now, on paper, it makes no sense. That's why you're not receiving a counter offer for us, it just seems to be hit and miss. You know, even if you add in those sixteen, sixty-foot trees up there, almost doubles the offer with the city sent. So, it just, it's not adding up.
Okay, John, I got what. Okay, John, I got, I got your point, so appreciate that. Okay. Anybody else got anything they want to augment that with or?
Thank you, John.
Something else? Go ahead.
I'd like to speak just real briefly on my, uh, QC, five hole on Westbrook Drive. And, um, ever since this. Uh, road. Early on was being proposed. I've had several conversations with Jim. And one of the things that I'm kind of confused about. Is that they're almost not wanting to lower that road very much. Now, the road right now. From what my measurements have been, is about eighteen inches higher than it was twenty years ago when my house was built. To me, if, if we're not going to have any road ditches, we should have that road at least at that elevation or lower. And they're not, as he indicated, they're not giving us, we're not getting any real information. I think the engineering has to come up with a real plan and know exactly what they're going to do before they approach us. Now, I understand in most cases, I'm worried about my lilac shrubs, everybody's probably heard that before. In most cases, I'm probably going to lose those. But one of the things I think they should do and consider is straightening that road out. Because if you'd straighten that road out, the center of the road would move approximately four feet to the north. Now, there's not a bunch of trees on the north side you guys would have to buy. There's a road ditch there that's going to be filled in anyway. You could do that, move the road over and not disrupt. Our other properties located on the south side near as much. I realize this sounds like I'm being selfish. But I think it would make for a better project overall. I think that you wouldn't have to have the impact of anybody being concerned about. Water in their drain field, because my drain field. Is probably, well, for sure, less than ninety feet from the middle of the road. Um, and there'd be a lot less impact overall if you did that. And also, in agreement with him, the offers that have been given for compensation aren't realistic at all. I mean, they were going to give me, I believe, I don't have it written down, but I believe they were going to give me like eight thousand dollars for. Those lilacs and the shrubbery. And then, I think it was fifteen thousand or something for my property. Well, those numbers aren't even close. And also, I have indicated that I feel if you do build that road, well, they're going to build it, I'm sure. One of the things they should do is provide us with a privacy fence. Going across our property, no different than the one that's out in the new development. Um, I know personally that would help me feel better about the whole project, and I have checked. To put a fence up in my yard across the length of my property would be sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars. Well, with what I'm getting compensated, by the time I put a fence up myself, I wouldn't have gained anything and I would have gave property away. So I'm not going to take a lot of your time tonight, there's probably some other people who want to speak too, but. So I just, I, I just think it's really important that you get a real. Detailed. Plan. And I build houses, you don't build a house without a good detailed plan, knowing exactly what you're going to do. And we haven't seen that. So, that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Myron. Anybody else, anything else?
I'll show that question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And at that area, we did take the resident concern along the end of the mower and put it out at minimum. Yeah, if you can see on the context, but it's. It's a good beginning of the mower and that was through discussion that goes off there.
Maybe it would help, you know, when we get done with the meeting or something like that, if somebody, people can take a look at it here. Anybody else got anything they want to add?
Here, my apologies. Did, did you say that the road is being lowered and flipped?
The road is being lowered, yep.
Okay, see, that's, that's news to us right here, right now.
So Jim's got the specs for the road along tonight. If you guys have not seen it, you can, I mean, I don't know if you want to just bring it and put it in the back. Jim?
Was there, was there food I could email along, yep? Uh, there, it's going to be large files, but.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Uh, Mike Snodgrove, five by one law. I just have a question for all of you. My property is being evaluated at two twenty-five a square foot. If you were in my shoes, that'd an acceptable offer. And where can I find it? Because I want to buy it. The other thing is specials. It's like buying a new pickup and saying, oh, by the way, we're going to add fourteen thousand to your sales price. We don't know where we're at. So how can we give you a counter offer? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? On it? Sure.
This is somebody, I don't live in that area, but the south is how. But in January, um, city council approved the land purchase in Sparks for four dollars. So I mean, I don't know what these folks are being offered, but is it close, is it, you know, similar, different?
Well, it'd be a different ballgame really, because we're talking about commercial. Real estate versus.
So that, there's also for that one, it's four dollars, the city purchased commercial for this project for ten or twelve dollars.
Okay, so, okay. I was curious, thank you, I'm not for a decent.
Right. Okay, anyone else?
And I live on House River, and I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that everybody's done. Um, I know that there's a lot of planning and preparation into this. Um, I would hope that whatever discussions need to continue to happen to. Satisfy all the interested parties, that that would happen quickly, so this project moving along yet this year, it is a safety risk.
Sure. All right, anybody else? Okay, so I think what we're going to probably do here, I mean, we're going to take what you guys are talking about under advisement for right now, because we got to talk about this a little bit more. Because, because that we did send out a letter on that and that was going to be kind of where we were going to stop. Um, but I think we can have some more conversation about this. And see where it goes. I'm not adverse to having another meeting. Uh, about this, but let's, I want to talk with everybody about that, what can kind of, it just wasn't on our meeting schedule for this evening. Um, I think we need, we'll, we'll talk about it, so. But I appreciate you guys coming in and explaining to us some of the things that may be, be, be missing so that we can kind of address that and see if we can move forward with this, okay?
And I just want to say, I'm, I would be open to putting a committee together, um, to meet with the residents. I, I don't. I don't see any reason not to.
I guess my only comment is, I'm just going to go louder, but yeah, I'm sorry. My comment is, I guess I'm kind of confused on. Where the, why there's so much like miscommunication and so many. Different things that are going on i- in, in their, in the residents' minds. When we've had communication with their attorney. And Mike's been out there, I guess I'm just really trying to wrap my head around why, why everyone seems so confused in the first place about what's actually going on. With the project. And I know that that's going to be hard for you guys to answer because you're not Ann, but. I, I just, I, I'm kind of baffled that we're having such a problem with communication. Um, it's kind of frustrating to me in a way because. I feel like this is a huge project and I, I don't know where. And I, I feel bad because I don't know where the disconnect has been. But, um, I, I, you know, we definitely are hearing your guys' concerns and, um. We have a executive session tonight too. I, I, I feel bad, but I don't know. I don't know how to fix the, the communication that we're having.
Good, I'm going to jack. And I, I am so sorry, Mike, but I'm going to throw my, my, the bus.
Come on up here though, so we can get up to the microphone. If you're going to make comments, please.
In your, in your name, please.
And introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Mary, not Calvin, John Calvin's wife. Anyway. Mike has been our go-between from day one. And everything, we have gotten so many different stories and so many different. Uh, you know, I didn't say that. Yes, I did say that. Oh, we need to revise your, your offer. Well, no, we're not going to. This is what we're getting from Mike and from the engineering firm. That is who most of our. Communication, especially up until a few weeks ago, has been.
Well, the project has been evolving and changing to accommodate, I feel. Um, we can't accommodate everything, but I feel like we've worked really hard at trying to, um. Appease the residents that are.
How do you know what the residents want when what we were asking and, and recommending wasn't getting passed on?
I, I don't think that it hasn't been passed on. Ha, I, I mean, are.
This project has gone through two public input meetings for both sides. There was a comment period after each one of those meetings. There was meetings on right of way that have been taken into account to try to tailor this design to everybody. But this project was started in two thousand and eighty. So we're going on four years of this project, and whenever something gets drawn out like that. That's when misconception, misinformation starts getting distributed. And it has changed since the beginning. I'll be the first one to admit that. The whole quarter was supposed to be one project. That got changed due to public comment. They got split up into two, outside, west side. It was going to go to the first entrance into Lost River, then it also was going to go up to Jubilee. Now there's talk of development west of the, uh, west of the Cheyenne diversion, so we didn't take it a little bit further. So there has been, this project has been. Evolving for years and. It has, I mean, like I said, it has changed, but the core of it, the lane, the construction of it has stayed the same. For the most part, since the beginning, so it's just, I think, a long time.
Yeah.
The thing, the thing too, and we accommodated by not taking as much right of way. We were able to try and shimmy that down.
Get through right of way negotiation. So trying to take what questions are being raised and. Take a six million dollar project or nine million dollar project and, and move it and try to make it fit. Albeit in an expedited timeline to get it constructed because everybody knows that road is going to get worse this spring. It's not going to get better.
Yep.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel bad and I'm, I'm sorry that, that there seems to be. Like, people are feeling like they're not being communicated because that, that, I don't like hearing that either. But I do feel like there's been so much evolving with the project that it starts getting a little bit muddy.
Um, you did ask however.
Yeah.
Where the breakdown was, and I know for most of my neighbors that we've been visiting with, working with. Um, that's the miscommunication, that's where the big breakdown has been. And we can't make an informed decision when we don't know what we're seeing.
Can I ask a question? How many of you guys that have Ann as an attorney feel that you guys are? Are you feeling like the communication is going well with that? Like, is the communication that you're getting from your lawyer being sufficient? Between our lawyer and, I guess, I'm confused because if you're going through your attorney.
I have no attorney, I've received.
Okay. Okay.
Myron, come on.
I've got the same lawyer, it's the same person.
Yeah, and I'll just say this, I'm not up here in an act of regression, I'm old and I can't hear well. So I've moved up. What was your question again?
I'm just wondering, like, there just seems to be a lot of confusion about the project. And I know that, you know, your attorney's been involved, there's been a lot of communication back and forth. I mean, I'm hoping that everybody's getting the communication from their attorney, from our, from our city attorney.
I'll just give you a simple example. I emailed Mike a question. How long did the appraisal process take? The answer was many months. I said, how long is nine months? Three, six, twelve? Got a different answer. Then he told me to talk to Lucas. Simple question. That happened in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one? Simple question. Free responses. If you don't know, you don't know.
I think we've got a good communication with our attorney.
Okay.
And I'm biased, she's been my company attorney for many, many years. I think we had good communication from our attorney. I know she's been communicating with Lucas. Where a lot of the confusion comes in, and when you have, there's six of us in the group now. We're communicating with Ann, our attorney, what we've heard from engineering. And it's like, who, who do you believe? Because everybody's getting a little bit different version of this.
Okay, so has your attorney formulated a list of questions that represent the group and sent them off to Onsted Twitchell?
We had, what, half a day notice on doing that? So no, that hasn't been done.
I think that's the first step, because I think that's going to get.
It goes longer than that, though. We've had conversation about this for a week.
And I responded to those questions, and then again on Friday, I said, you have additional. Wanted to, yes, they, they, that was not the questions that you guys had, and I responded to her, uh, with my responses to all the questions.
And those were your private meetings, right? The ones.
I'm sorry about the questions that she had, she had.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, and then, uh, and then again, last Friday, um, she requested that meeting, and so I said, if you guys have any questions, send them our way. Because like I said, I already responded to the, the other questions that you had, uh, just a general concerns that residents, you're not very unsure. So those were, those were answered.
But the, the questions changed because the answers changed to the question when we're talking to engineers.
A lot of the question that still is out there, and a lot of your questions is the design of the project. I told this to Ann before, design of the project can change. It happens on every project. What we're talking about is just compensation for the project, because that's what we're trying to do. And as far as that changing, it really has not changed, it's changed once. It's, it's been that initial, uh. Area that was a neapresal report, and then it was brought down. At the request of the property owners, so for the extent of that right of way was brought down. So that really, I mean, that all we're talking about here is the value of property.
Sorry.
To change the value of property based on the project, that's not what we're doing. We're looking at this property as is in its current state with all the projects, so that, that value is what that value is.
And I, I totally agree with you, Lucas, on the value, but these residents' concerns about the project design and everything. Are really important too, and are probably factoring into whether they're going to sign up or not on it, so. We're going to, we haven't.
We had those public comment periods where we talked about the design of the project, and that's when that was supposed to be in place.
The same, I mean, we did those, we did all those.
I, I feel like, uh.
Wh- when were they? Because I personally, I don't scour the cities.
They were a long time ago. I mean, I really think you can sit down with a group.
Project started, now, that's what I mean, the project started in nineteen.
About those.
Yeah.
Meetings.
Yeah, I think we did. This was a bigger, this was a bigger project.
I think my point is with that, and it's. You are focusing on, and I get it, this is the project. Been there, you're focusing on, we need to acquire the land. The project may change. You might start digging the project, find bad soil. And think you have to go nine feet down and suddenly it's twelve. I get that. Project, project can change. You're focusing on the things that the city needs to be focusing on. First off, we have to acquire the property. Second off, we have to, the, the design may change during the process. But a- a- again, reducing the right of way was a good thing. It doesn't solve all the problems. I'm sorry, get back to my point. I do this when I'm teaching too, so my apologies. I get it, you're looking at right now, we need to acquire the land. We have to have the dirt be simple. Okay? We are looking at this as, yes, you have to have the, the property, you have to buy the land fee simple. But the value that's been offered for the land and the improvements thereof, which are still our improvements that have value, are not being addressed.
So what, what improvements are you discussing that you're adding?
We're talking about the trees. The trees in particular.
Which the city created the tree replacement policy and the numbers that were included in that are from your nurseries.
They weren't. And that was from Mike.
Yeah.
They, they were not included.
Were in there.
Our Ammer maples were. And then three ghost pine trees. We still have. And if you go out there and look at those stakes, I'm not implying you have it, but you go out there and look at those stakes. I've got sixteen sixty-foot trees, more pine trees in there. And with this, there could be another thirteen to fifteen trees in there. And the offer that was explained to me, and as I did the math backwards for the three pine trees. And the Ammer maples, that's what the number comes up to. Nothing about the sixty-foot trees, nothing about the additional pine trees. And if it's off two feet one way or another, again, there could be thirteen more pine trees in there. So, again, I'm, I'm kind of getting off subject, and I don't mean to take up the whole meeting, I apologize. I do this in my class.
So John, let's do this then, okay? I got no problem getting a group together. We need to make this soon, though, I don't want this dragging on any longer. This has been an elongated process the way it is, right?
Yeah.
This week, the weather's not going to be helpful for any of this, all right? What I'm going to suggest is that the following week, either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday, we're tied up, we're alone.
Okay, so just saying, Tuesday or Wednesday, let's pick a day, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
All right? And let's have, we'll take two council members, we'll have Jim and Lucas there. You guys bring three people, or maybe four, you don't need to hold everybody. You guys bring three people or maybe four. You don't need to hold everybody. Bring in, bring in questions.
So leave Mary home.
Your choice on that one. All right.
I don't have a choice on that one.
Mary. Mary can come.
Benny, let's, let's try it.
I agree. I think.
Just so we don't have, we don't need twenty people because otherwise, you know, all committees, when they have twenty people, it's going to take forever, all night. But let's get everybody's, yeah, pick four, yeah. Yeah. And have everybody funnel what you guys need. And let's get together and then let's try and get this figured out.
I agree. I appreciate that. I think that's what needs to happen.
Your concerns are completely valid and we want to hear them.
So let's.
Quick comment. So like you want our counter offer, right? The stakes here and it's off by two or three feet. That's significant square footage if we're talking a couple hundred square feet or one, like one ninety-seven, two hundred feet. That's big money. That's big dollars. How can we?
Well, I have money stakes around.
And that's communication.
Well, but I, I think we're at a good point. If we could read, we can talk about all these things there.
Absolutely.
Put it down on paper, bring it to the meeting, and, but let's get this.
Well, a list. And if there are any other.
Other neighbors.
Any other residents that would want to go, um, it doesn't matter if you're being represented by our attorney. We can have representation there.
Okay.
And we can all meet at my office before that and get all these questions down. So I.
So look, okay.
I want to see the project get moving forward. But I thank you. It makes it faster.
Let's try that to hear that Tuesday's out, I guess, but maybe Wednesday or Thursday. Let's see if we can square up a time here. And we can send out a, uh, a deal and just see how everybody pick, pick one night and we go with it. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. Stephanie, Sarah. Yeah. And then we'll have Lucas, Jim. I don't know, Brent, I guess, would you be on that one too?
So I'm guessing by all this, it's going to drag out Wall Avenue for another damn year?
No, I don't think so. I think we'll get this one squared away. I don't anticipate, Terry, I don't anticipate it. This is just the, uh, negotiation we're going to have to go through a little bit and try and get this handled. So, okay.
How long is the project going to take? Do you have an estimate from start to finish?
So we have it broken out into two milestones. The first milestone is Lost River Road to the bridge, and that would be constructed in twenty twenty-three. And then the second phase, which would be west of Lost River Road to Jubilee, might be constructed in twenty twenty-four.
How many months?
How many months? I can't tell you that.
I'm just wondering, like, where, like, how is it going to start and feel the need to do that? And what?
Right. Um, we could, so right now, our proposed schedule was to, basically, we're going to approve plans tonight and then open bids on May fourth, um, and look at advertising, probably in a second meeting in May. Hopefully, starting probably midsummer and then finishing out around, we have a substantial completion date proposed for the first milestone of September second of this year, is what we were planning for that first bid from Cheyenne River to. Yeah.
When you said the second one was in twenty twenty-four to Jubilee, you plan to their entrance?
Okay, yeah. So there'd always be access to Lost River via either one of the other two orange lanes, the first one. So the city did accept it or did receive bids on the wall at West Project, uh, two weeks ago.
East project.
East, two weeks ago.
East project, two weeks ago, um, waiting on some information on the contract to award that. But, um, that one, I can see being awarded probably in two weeks. So that one starts.
So the people on West Grove aren't going to be able to get in and help during this project?
No, there'll be, yeah, there's a combination that we made for that.
Engineering will do that.
Same as on.
Yeah.
People in all, reasonable access is all we can, all we can do. They're doing concrete.
And they're doing the same with my development because I got a road going by my place. They're going to build a temporary road that we're going to use temporarily just to get us through while we're trying to survive this construction season.
And when you say Wall Avenue East, you mean east of the bridge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else we need to, on that one, Jim, you want to approve that? Was there any more discussion? I think we kind of got this one squared away as far as how we're going to handle the, the right of way deal. Um, so Jim, you want to talk about?
We have, we have the final specs here.
Yep.
Our plan was to approve it to make contingent upon public review. We had the final review last Thursday with also providing public works. There were some things identified that need to be straightened out. Um, that was my recommendation, was to order a contention for public works review. If we have other comments from, um, adjacent landowners, I, I don't know how we address that. We could push the approval these back two weeks and still kind of keep our schedule.
Are you going then?
Well, and I might kind of like a work. I don't mean to construct, construction.
Could we do a special meeting if we had to?
You could do a special meeting if you.
I mean, after meeting with that.
I mean, I would go through. They have to change. So, yeah. So, I mean, we could do a contingency condition upon public works and, but a, a next week's meeting or something.
I think we should wait until that meeting, the residents. And then if we have to do a special meeting, it's a special meeting. We can't be in that happen. Uncomfortable.
Got to be careful we don't set this back too far. Can we still?
I agree with this.
I agree. There's no reason.
And we can change it if we have to. But I mean.
We can do a special meeting the very next day.
If we can get everybody together. I mean, it doesn't always happen.
If you got any complaints from anybody on each side, um, not that I'm, we're, we're going, what's the problem with approving that and getting it started?
No, the east side's done. That, that's already, the, the bidding is, that, that one's, it's the.
Yeah.
The west side's where the concern is right now. West of the bridge, going west, that's where we're working on trying to get the bid out so we can get an idea what this is going to cost.
I guess just as a homeowner in Westbrook, we haven't seen that packet you guys are reviewing. That's kind of going back to the same comprehensive communication. And we could give that package.
Once it's approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
It's just, yeah, levels of confusion.
Um, I personally don't feel comfortable voting on it tonight because I don't want any more confusion for the residents.
But they can't see it.
I know.
Totally. It's, it's a process thing, right? So that's where I think some of the confusion is. And if we can go through and approve a plan, and then if there's a change that needs to be made after we all meet, there's no reason we can't.
You can amend.
Amend.
We, you can have change orders too.
Right.
We can do it in those.
But then we could get the.
We've got time in here.
But then we can add to them and it bridges that gap. And it's just a process thing. And it's, I, I'm sorry, it's confusing. It's entry code, but it's a process we have to follow for. So, um, I know I suppose a part of sitting in on this plan review, um, I think that if there's any changes, they will be minor at this point. I'm fairly confident in that.
It may not be much at all, really, but yeah.
They've actually, we went through an entire list of concerns that were brought to us and made sure that we were addressing as much of that as is humanly feasible possible. Doesn't mean that we're not willing to make more changes. No, it doesn't. We're open to that. But in order to get this thing going, I think we're in a situation, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm, I'm open, right? Because I hear you. But I think we're in a situation where we, we need to keep the process going. And if we need to addendum it, or if we need to change order it, or if we need to do something like that, we can do that.
I think that would be the hope too. I think, I think we just want the final plan. I think that's been half the problem is that the lines change. So for us to make counter offers based on plans that are changing, I'm open to just saying, this is the plan. Now make a counter, but we need something to make counter.
Something to go off of.
Right, yeah.
All right.
If, yeah, if Sarah has explained the process and that's how it is, I, I think that would be, okay. I think that maybe that is the best way to move forward.
They want the packet, let's approve it.
Should they involve that, Jim, or?
It's, we're not, we're not going to keep up with people. I need to get, you can move them.
Just in process.
And then the ability to evaluate it then too.
It's difficult. Okay.
Okay. I like that. I think it gives us a place of part. If everybody agrees and, and takes this as a, a meet and middle approach.
I'm going to look for a motion to approve the plans and specs and send those out, Jim, to the residents who've requested them so they can review them.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Contingent upon.
Contingent on public works review.
We'll just, public works, look at it after this one.
Yep.
And then we can.
All right. Sarah makes a motion. I'm going to get a second.
I'll second.
Stephanie gives a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion periods.
So the next one we have on the, we're saying you have a direct order to advertise the bids, and this will be something that be done, but we wouldn't ever take part when we see up.
Fair.
It's procedural.
So let's see that, that, put that contingent on the.
Thank you.
Makes the motion.
I mean, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to directly offer to advertise for bids contingent on the results of the forthcoming meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Give a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Stephanie gives a second. Trace, all in favor, say aye.
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 So with the, with the, always have to publish in the paper, neck and, and then it's things that being published on Wednesday. At least the neighbor, you can publish every day, right? One physical paper on Wednesday. We publish for three times, twenty-one days, the advertisement.
That's good.
And then, so that's where we just get constrained in every possible place. It also reads on a month.
It elongates everything.
And trying to be, these milestones, they set up.
That's a good point.
Please.
Yep.
It's, it's a challenge. We have to start looking backwards in the end tables. So.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Sewer ordinance. Lucas.
I'll take this on, on Mr. Mary's counter, Jim, but, uh, at your last meeting, uh, you directed me to, uh, look at possible changes to this ordinance based on the sewer, uh, connection, discussion that we had. Um, I did some research on this, and it's actually the North Dakota Administrative Code that provides guidance on connecting to, uh, public sewers. Uh, and essentially it says, you know, if there is a public sewer within, uh, two hundred feet, uh, of a property or home, they're required to connect to it, uh, if required by the approving authority. Uh, and so again, Horace's situation for Cass County, the approving authority, uh, is part of Cass Public Health. So I looked into their, uh, their regulations on connecting to public sewers. And they have two different versions of regulations, so I'm not sure, um, which one they have in effect right now. But the one that I think is there existing, it says, the health officer shall refuse to grant a permit for the construction of an individual sewage disposal system where a public sewer system is available. And then I think the proposed new regulation says the adopting authority shall refuse to grant a permit for the construction of an individual sewage treatment system where a public sewer system is available within two hundred feet of the property. Right? Uh, and that's, that latter one is consistent with the, uh, administrative code. So I reached out to, uh, Fargo-Cass Public Health to confirm that, uh, that what the regulation means is, is essentially, if you have a, a private sewer right now, it's fine. But if it fails or if someone needs a new sewer and it's within two hundred feet of the city's public sewer and the city sewer has capacity, they will not issue a permit for someone to private work. So that, that's the requirement. It's not forcing anyone. It's just saying we will not issue a permit for that. So like I said, I reached out to, um, the Fargo-Cass Public Health and, and Johnson responded to me and he did, uh, confirm, uh, that that's what happened. So any new ones, they will not issue a permit. And he also said that, uh, failure, also they will not issue a permit. And he said, failure constitutes septic backup or surfacing in the yard or components of the system destroyed by improper use of natural, uh, events. They had confirmed that. And then again, um, that, oh, that, uh, if the city doesn't have capacity, they're not going to require someone to connect. And he said, uh, the situation on, in Horace for that is along County Road Seventeen. So before with the city's, uh, sewer line that connects into Fargo, it's got capacity restrictions. So he said, that's one where they, let's say, has that capacity, they won't require, uh, people to connect. So that all being said, the reason I bring that up is, uh, Councilmember Lance from had a question about some of the sections in here that, uh, discussed. Uh, you know, when someone has to connect to the city sewer, I sent you guys all the conversion to with changes that I made before I had communicated with Fargo-Cass Public Health. So the section I want you guys to look at is nine dash zero one zero three subsection four. That's the one that, that we had questions on. Right there. So my new recommendation, I, I changed it to. Up to see, that's dancing. Can you, if you guys, can you guys see this?
I couldn't read it anyway. Can you just, can you just read me your change?
Read up there. So before I, I had entered that, uh, essentially two years after notice from, uh, the city or tank failure, then you have to connect. That doesn't make sense. Have that based on my, uh, conversation with Fargo-Cass Public Health. So I changed it, uh, to read. I figured out, I figured this whole thing to make it make sense. I'll just read the whole thing to make it make sense. The owner of all houses, buildings, or properties used for human occupancy, employment, recreation, or other purposes in the city and abutting on any street, alley, or right of way in which there is now located or may in the future be located a public sanitary or combined sewer of the city is hereby required at the owner's expense to install suitable toilet facilities they're in and to connect such facilities directly with the proper public sewer in accordance with. And then I deleted language, uh, and just put in accordance with Fargo-Cass Public Health regulations as amended and deleted all the way until it says provided. It's provided that said public sewer is within two hundred feet of the property.
Perfect.
So, I mean, I wanted to see if it could be up to the city to, to regulate that. It's not, the city is not the approving authority. So under Northwood Administrative Code, it's up to the approving authority, which is Fargo-Cass Public Health. So that being said, let's make it their issue. So if someone is going to, uh, install a new private septic system, they're within two hundred feet of a public sewer, Fargo-Cass Public Health will not issue them the permit to do so. If their tank fails near within two hundred feet of a septic, Fargo-Cass, Fargo-Cass Public Health will not issue you a permit to do so. Because of that, it will be required to connect to the city sewer system. That is not the city forcing anyone to connect. That is Fargo-Cass Public Health not issuing a permit for them to construct a new, uh, private septic system or improve, repair, private septic system.
And this is really good clarification, but it kind of, I think, amplifies my point. Um, this is further support to just remove all of this language because the city of Horace is not in this game. It's Fargo-Cass Public Health and the private citizen who is going to be in charge of this.
Like, no, no.
We're spelling it out. It's just even slower.
The city's rights and needs, where do you look to begin?
There's other language that I think needs to be changed in here then, because it feels to me like, I mean, our original conversation on this subject was that we wanted to codify in the city sewer system who, who was responsible for repairs between the city and a homeowner. And I fully, I fully, um, support that. But somehow, somehow we've, we've gone off course from what our initial intent was now. And we're adding a whole bunch of information about private septic systems, which I, I don't know that it's going to do anything other than confuse, confuse the residents, feeling like they have two governmental bodies now that they have to somehow be, be working with. Um, I mean, Fargo-Cass Public Health is the governing body. We're just creating confusion. I mean, why, why would we do that? I mean, it's like, it's like we're creating an issue. It's like a solution looking for a problem. We didn't have a prob, we don't have a problem, right?
They did have a problem. The city did not have an order. It's a huge problem. It just.
But so, so maybe.
Regulates all other utilities in the city except for it didn't have a public sewer.
Well, so maybe, maybe it needs to set out the cost share and maybe just needs to say private septic, septic systems are governed by Fargo-Cass Public Health. Look to them. Period. I mean, to me, to me, this is the city interjecting itself where it's really not necessary. It's like mirroring what Fargo-Cass.
That's the argument. And the city wouldn't have any regulations on liquor licenses either because the state of North Dakota issues liquor license in state, in, in the city. And then city all the issues on. So, I mean, there are situations where it is the city and another agency that will have authority. And so I think this just lays it all up for residents so they can see, you know, here's, here's what I need to do. Uh, anyone that's building a new building, same thing. They can go to the state's ordinances and they see, yep, this is what's required from the city of Horace, and I need to get a permit from Fargo-Cass.
Yeah, not from the city, from Cass Public Health is where the permit comes from, correct?
For a private septic system.
Yep. And, and when it says official notice, or did we take that out of all of the sections?
So the other section that I mirrored the language, um, that I just read you is in nine oh one oh four subsection five. So again, just taking out what's in.
Because you, because the official notice isn't from the city of Horace. It's from, it's from Fargo.
There is no notice.
Public Health. We took, we're taking it out completely.
They're not going to know that they need to get a permits and all this tells them, just so you know, you need to apply with Fargo-Cass Public Health regulations and doing something, you need to get a permit.
Because that's been, that's been a question in the past, you know? How does this work? Yeah. That's why it's put it in here now so people know where they need to go when this happens. Because right now, we. Yeah, that's why it's put it in here now so people know where they need to go when this happens, because right now we don't.
So under nine zero one zero four sub two. Would we take out that language too? That you obtain a written permit from the Fargo Cast Public Health.
What section two is.
Yep.
Look in the last sentence.
No, but the very last, no, no, right, right before that, where it says, which the applicant shall supplement. With any plant specifications and other information as are deemed necessary by Fargo Cast Public Health and the city. I don't know. I don't know what, and the city would be there if the, if the governmental agency is.
In case the city needs anything. My job is to cover the city, give the city discretion. But the city needs something and there's something that needs to be in that permit. Because part of that public health and the city of Horace work together on this stuff. And so one of those situations, I guess, for this one would be the the situation with five hundred seventeen. City of Horace works with Fargo Cast Public Health, Fargo Cast Public Health asks the city, you know, what capacity does the city have? And so it it just keeps that. Communication open between the two and less residents know that, just so you know, these two entities are working together and they might both have condition. I don't know what conditions Horace would ever put on or what additional information City of Horace would would need for a private septic system. But the language is there to allow it.
Well, then that's actually is like, that actually is my concern. If if we're going to continue to have this language in there, I think we also need to add. Section fifteen. From Fargo Cast Public Health that discusses their variance process. Upon application, the adopting authority may grant a variance for the requirements of the resolution when in its opinion. Undo hardship may result from strict compliance and that strict application would be unreasonable and practical or not feasible. I mean, if we're going to codify what Fargo Cast Public Health is going to look at in these situations, which I honestly don't think we need to do. We we should also codify then that there actually is a variance process. And it's a very detailed one as to what they would look at. When you say they wouldn't issue a permit, that might be true, but there's a variance process. Right, but so we're codifying some things in our ordinances, but not others.
We are all finding what.
I.
Residents need to do if they are trying to build a new home or new business in City of Horace and certain requirements that they might expect when they do.
Well, and when we tell them that they absolutely won't be able to get one for failure, I think we also need to tell them, but oh, by the way, there might be a variance process. Through the governing body of, I don't mean to argue with you. I just, I don't support the language. Um, and if the language has to stay in, I think the variance language needs to go in as well. It just, it seems confusing to me for the residents.
Any thoughts, guys? I guess I don't, I don't see enough. I'm dismissing it, Stephanie, but it just, this gets us. Like what you said, we need to get something there so people have a co place to go look. And if it gets beyond this, well, that's not ours anymore to deal with. At least we're telling them where they can need to go to get it sorted away. Most, I don't know how many times we're in this with Cast Public Health. Until people start having, you know, their septic system failures, which will come in some of that. Beyond that, for like new residents, probably not gonna, unless we start running on a capacity on our. Here creek run, you know, we have to move it, move it to something else, but even that will probably have a solution in place by the time that situation hits, so. I just think we've got enough language there to. I don't want to bring this, anything else.
I can only speak to my personal experience. My personal experience putting in a septic system back in twenty sixteen. Was that I needed to have a drawing. That I submitted a drawing of where my septic system is going to be on my lot. Submitted that both through the city, Fargo Cast Public Health, um. Cast Public Health was very specific about what type of system I needed. If it's an ordinance or a new rule, he got into a fact that I needed to be a mound system. But the capacity needed, the whole book that I think Stephanie is working through right now. And they didn't hesitate to let me know that if I didn't do certain things that I could follow a variance procedure. So I was aware of that. Um, that all came through Fargo Cast Public Health. I.
So you're saying they out, they outlined all of the steps.
Right, and they they gave me that book that she has. So I I've seen that before and I read through it extensively. Um. I I know where Lucas is coming from. And I I see. What he's trying to cover as an attorney for the city, right? And I think that this is good. I know where Stephanie is coming from too. And and I see that we're just trying to make sure that this is as clean as possible and that the city isn't overreaching, right? But I. Personally, based on my experience. I see anything further here to be a little bit of overkill. Um, in this ordinance, but again, my personal experience, I. Don't have to create ordinances on a regular basis. So what I read here based on the ordinances, but I know you live in the city of West Fargo when I lived there. Looks to be very enough. That's all I can speak to at this point.
I don't have a whole lot, I guess. I I see Stephanie's point. Um, as well with just maybe thinking that. The possibility of overreach, but, um. I mean, if she, if you guys wanted to add in that little section, I'd be fine with it and then. Follow the date, um, if you guys don't do any more.
If you put a reference in there, then Lucas will. Please reference their document and.
That's substantial.
I mean, it's just that, uh, what that does is it gives them a place to go look that the variances that they lay out. But again, it's not that we're laying them out. This was Cast Public Health variance procedures.
But the longer go without a sewer ordinance, the more risk we have, uh, costing money. We've already had to pay out to an individual because it wasn't clear, you know? I I think.
I know.
Sat here and 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 listened to their case and felt that it was fair because if there was nothing that was dilated. And and I have no problem doing that, right? But we can't do that with every single resident in this town. There needs to be clear and concise direction. How far is the city's responsibility? How far is the homeowner's responsibility? So that everybody knows what their responsibility is fiscally. So that it doesn't open up either A, the homeowner, or B, the city, to unnecessary cost. That's the only reason that this needs to be in place. I believe above and beyond just jurisdictional awareness.
And I completely agree with you, Sarah, and we could accomplish that. With all of the language without private septic systems in this ordinance.
So what do you want to do?
I I would prefer that all of the private septic languages be taken out. If if we were going to maybe leave it in and amend and add variance, I just, I'd probably want to take another. Quick run through.
I I can't agree with that because I think it opens up the city's unnecessary liability.
Which part?
The fact that Lucas references both Fargo Cast Public Health and the city as two jurisdictions working together in this.
But could you just explain again the city's role? In relation of Fargo Cast Public Health. In this, for the private septic.
So the reason I like this in here is so residents know what they're supposed to be doing. As the residents of the city of Horace typically look to the city's ordinances as far as what they're allowed to do and not do. So all this does is just outline this is the process if you have a private or want a private septic system on your property. Not for, the city's not overreaching anything. Here's the process.
I I think if we maybe.
I've argued.
No, and I I appreciate it. I appreciate the work. Um.
And and I mean, keep in mind, this is what the other city where you, I didn't make this up, so I I.
Yeah.
You don't need to, I don't. It's just. Let people know this is all of us in the city of Horace.
I guess I would. Maybe the variance language added in there.
That's acceptable to me. I don't want to take that out just because I would have been, I mean, I'd be lost, you know, as as a resident. If I hadn't gone down to Fargo Public Health and that Fargo Cast Public Health, like spent a ton of time and read all their documents, I wouldn't have known where to start. Where if I had this, you know, handful of sheets that I could have gone through, it would have made my life a lot easier. So I'm open at the variance.
Move on with this. We need to get this done. We need to move on. So add in the variance. Part and, uh, let's proceed. And this is the first reading, so we do that, Jay. Yep. That was in there a while, ready for the second reading.
Thank you, both of you, all, everybody, appreciate it.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the sewer ordinance, uh, with the understanding that a section will be added. Which outlines Fargo Cast Public Health's variance process. In relation to private septic systems.
Okay, got a motion on the table, get a second. All right, Sarah, do the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Jim.
Thank you.
Get on the sixty third.
All right, water sewer storm, we're sure to improve this at the twenty two to nine sixty third street, the all of the sixty second. Flams move on to final review with city staff. Last week, uh, the week before that, Friday, cleaned everything up. Wanted to hear it's a continuation of the existing section of sixty third. Uh, eighty seconds, all the way to the south, there's another component as part of distribution. Then it's your sewer for Cub Creek and Lakeview and, uh, Storm Sewer all along that. On Creek Street, Turbo Gutters. And I'm sure news path on the east side, straight to Sherman's Path on the east side.
Yep.
Um, trees and plants, so. What we're looking for tonight is a proof of plan specification and directly order to advertise bits.
Okay, I mean, I want to make that motion.
I I I was a part of these meetings, weeks long hours going through each one of these plan sheets and making sure that, uh. Every manhole was covered and every inlet was there, so, um, I have no problem making a motion to approve the plans.
Yeah, we'll do these separately. We'll just do the approved specs, like you said, so that motion for that, can I get a second?
I do have one question. Do you want it after this second?
Which one are we looking at here?
Number, I just have, I just have a question. Could you just remind what the improvement district? Looks like for this project again?
It's pretty much half mile on your side of it. It is a mile.
Okay, okay.
Goes along avenue. Or it doesn't go all the way up to the next road. It's pretty much, um, eighty second south. Because the first portion of it from seventy six to eighty second, that improvement district was done halfway. So this picks up the rest of it.
Okay.
So there's nothing more north of the project itself.
Is all, okay. And then you talked about the the shared use. Path. Uh, what's the width of that?
Okay, that's not just what's existing.
Existing on the north side of eighty second, or actually it's on Creek Way, this.
Okay, okay.
This is one.
And it's needed because the amount of snow that this corridor against. Oh, yeah, we gotta have place for snow, so that's important. It also lines up the, um, entrances. Coming into Tara Gardens, which is really, really nice. That's offset right now and it's a mess and this cleans all that up. So it's, it's going to be beautiful. I'm excited.
Those are my questions. That was it.
Right, so Sarah's got a motion on the table to accept, yeah, approve the plans and specifications. Can I get a second out there?
Sure.
Okay, you want me to do the second? All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next one, Jim, anything you want? All right, you want me to make some motion? Can I get a second? Sorry, in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Jase, you got the next one here.
So, uh, the application in front of you prevent is for a public hearing for variance request from Horace City Code section seventeen point five point six subsection five B. Which requires a minimum backyard setback within R three zoning districts be thirty feet. Uh, this request is approved to allow the applicant to construct an additional four feet onto a portion. Of the proposed single family dwelling to accommodate a wider TV room, which would allow for more maneuverability within the dwelling. Uh, the applicant's representative, which is here tonight. Um, has stated that the special conditions circumstance that exists within this. Or exists for the soon to be owners of the property is that they're elderly. Um, and that the request would allow for additional space, uh, to move from room to room. Uh, following review of the application. When reviewing a a variance on a technical perspective, staff is unable to identify unnecessary hardships such as its, uh, site constraint. Or or top graph constraints, property shape, the location of the property. That would be specific to this property that wouldn't affect any other property in the city that's zone R three. There are no special conditions, circumstances, or clearly to the property, um. Old indirect vicinity of this property throughout the city as well. And for those reasons, staff was unable to recommend. Uh, that the planning and zoning commission recommend approval to the city council. Staff would carry that recommendation that the city council denied this variance as well. Uh, planning and zoning commission did meet by an hell of a carrying on March fourteen. Uh, to review both application, there were draft minutes in the packet that was submitted to you as well. Uh, and the planning zoning commissioner voted for O to recommend denial of variance request, uh, for eight fifty six harbor circle. I wouldn't know. This is in newer development. There is nothing currently built on that property. Properties are actually not open for development at this time. It's currently being constructed. It's the overall site. Um, the people are not the owners of the property at this point, uh, but are under contract for that property and attempt to build a home. For this site. Uh, if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them. I said this is a public hearing, so whenever we're done with this part.
I I got a question. Would you stand and give me your name, sir?
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hang on, sorry, let's open the public meeting. Open a public. Speaking or whatever you want to call it, hearing, sorry.
Forgive me, protocol.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So I read through this a couple of different times. And it's my understanding you get some older folks that want to build on this property, right?
Yeah.
And they might use a walker or a wheelchair and they want a little more room. So is there an alternate layout that could be proposed for them that would not encroach on this particular type of zoning?
At this point, no.
Is there a foundation that's been put in? I mean, nothing's been done there, right?
We're, we're in the process of finalizing the the footprint, the plan board. So once we. The development's done and we've been set and start building on it, it's just. They're elderly and they got some relatives that are elderly in wheelchairs and. To be able to navigate back in that room specifically because the TV rooms where they're looking, trying to get, to gain some more footage.
So is there a way to take some footage from another area?
Yeah, not really.
I'm I'm asking because this kind of sets a standard in a a development, you see, and nothing's been built there. And for us as a council, it. It's really unprecedented to go against planning and zoning when they've already voted for nothing to deny this. But we try to work with people, right?
Sure.
So I just want to know if there's something here that I'm not understanding.
No, I think, uh. I don't know if there's anything I could say that's going to make anything more clear. I know that the the house is pretty much said what what the owners want.
So what's going to happen?
Hang on a second. Let's ask, Jase, when they were getting front of planning and zoning with this thing, what was their specific questions? I mean, we, I know that there's got to be this burden of proof that we're looking at.
Right, so the their main question really was. I think there was a reliance on the that rail line property going away and the property was then eventually going to expand somehow. Uh, that was kind of, that was their their main question, the planning and zoning commission chair. Playing a zoning commission and kind of shut that down and said, no, reality, that's not going to just operate at all.
And I wasn't probably on vacation and so. And they didn't have a lot of insight, I think, to anything about much.
Yeah, there was not, not many questions. It was, it was kind of the planning and zoning commission really talked about, you know, we don't really ever approve variances for. Uh, blank property, let alone more. That is not even approved at this point.
Because it it doesn't see the hardship clause. And I mean, I know where you're coming from, but I mean, we've got.
There's a technical review of the hardship of this property and there's nothing on that property that says. They can't meet the setback of that.
But there's nothing they can do to like change floor plan?
It really can't. It's for what's next to that room is the laundry room. And then the laundry room is can't shrink that down anymore. Yeah, we got a bedroom next to it. It just. Gee, we did an art on our prop. Gee, we did on our, on our property, we did this, we built our house, but we still had the footprint, but on the one end, it's a handicap bathroom. And you got bedrooms that are right next to each other so you can get in and out, and then the wheelchair, somebody could get out of there and come out and into the TV room, but. So, I mean, no, just trying to look forward a little bit on how you lay out. It was just the, mainly for the TV room, because they got, actually the bathrooms and bedrooms were wheelchair walkers, but this. Specifically for that room, they wanted the, the extra room big. To be able to navigate and circle. No, I know. The wheelchair. We wound up, I mean, that's how we laid out ours too, so they could get around. And the other thing was because there's a railroad bed behind there, not everything out there, you know, that backyard. The ne- next neighbor is quite a distance away. You know, that's why they're wondering if they could, you know, if there was a neighbor right next to the, you know. Right next to you to have the railroad bed. You know, some neighbor right next to it where you're starting to get closer to the backyard of the neighbor, that's the other thing they were kinda looking at, so you know, it's not. They're really not really beating on anybody behind you, we're not asking to go wider because the tent would set back on the, on the side a lot. Right, but I know. When we, when we came up with this, we call the hardship clause, this is something that we had gone through. When I first came on board, everybody and their dog was coming in here for variance on everything, right? So you had to come up with, finally, you know, so what is the hardship? I mean, this is kinda what this comes down to with him, does it meet a criteria? And then we came up with, you know, that there was, had to be a hardship clause that was. I don't know what was the phrase we used, but I mean, it, it was. Talked about quite extensively of what would have to make a hardship clause, and I think planning and zoning has adhered to that quite well over the last. Say five years, five, six years, so. I'm a little reluctant. To say the least, if they do a four oh on it, after having conversations about this, I'm reluctant to try to overturn that without some more. Let's say evidence or some more, something that would make me, I mean, I understand the situation, but the hardship. Part of this thing is where I'm struggling. From what I'm understanding, too, usually, the variances. Applied after the structure is built.
Typically, that's, that's your more common variance, now there are people that have come through, let's say if there was a river running rate through that subdivision, they could apply for. A fair subdivision variance that wouldn't affect the entire subdivision, this is just a true straight zoning property, they zoned it for a reason, they zoned it on three and our four. There's nothing on that site that would justify differing from the proposed setbacks that we've wanted so many districts for that property.
My question then is. Structure gets built. Could they file for variance to add an addition on?
No, I, I just said like, the, the hard part, it's gonna come back to again, was, what is the hardship? If you wanna put an addition on the property, what is to say, and why would you?
This is back to, this is back to the wheelchair, so they ride in a wheelchair and they really need this.
And they're gonna look at the variance, and staff will look at the variance from that, the site perspective. Is there something on that property that affects that property differently than any other property that's owned R three? You know, we've had ones with half the river course setback coming through, we've had your proof for variance to put something in the front yard setback. That's because a hundred, but river course setback ate up the entire property, so there's a physical site constraint there. This is kind of a wide open field, there's really not anything topographically that would say there is a specific constraint. That is undue on this property. Then it would be any other, than any of those R three properties right next to you.
So, so. Every part of me has. Just one fuzzy towards these two elderly people that have a wheelchair and wanna be able to get around, but. He said a danger is precedent, because when you zone a property, you zone it a certain way for a reason. And as builder, you're expected to build within those parameters and within those guidelines. And so for that reason. I have to. And I can't in good faith go again, start planning and zoning department, especially since there's nothing else there at this time. If there was something else there, if there was a reason, you know, it would be a totally different story, but the fact that this is just. Right off the get-go, we wanna add this, it, it makes it very, very difficult, even though. And, and I wanna make these people's lives easier, you know?
Lucas, go ahead, you're.
So, let me just read what your ordinance currently says as far as you guys making a decision as city council. No application for variance shall be approved unless the city council finds that all of the following are present. A, that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the premises. And which are not applicable to other premises in the same zoning district. That literal being, that literal interpretation of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. D, that the special conditions and circumstances have not resulted from the actions of the applicant. Indeed, that granting the variance requested will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this ordinance. By this ordinance to other premises.
Well, we have our answer, don't we?
And it's, it's right in the ordinance, so.
And I, I'm sorry, I, 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 I feel bad as well, but I, I agree with everything Sarah, Sarah said, um. I think it's hard to, I think it's hard.
On the planet, they said, you know, that was their option, is, is to apply for a variance and see what happens, that's.
And I feel bad for our new incoming residents, but I, I think it would be helpful here.
I think we're soon enough, though, that maybe there's a possibility they can look at some alternatives. For that, for this reason, I have to. Make a motion to. Accept. Oh, I'm sorry. Go for it.
You wanna make a motion?
No.
They, any other comments that you guys wanna make? Good? Alright, then we'll close the public hearing. Sarah, go ahead.
I, I have to. Make a motion to accept the recommendations of planning and zoning and staff to deny.
Okay, so we wanna make a second to that.
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Brenton, liquor license app.
What we have for you is a liquor license application, we did a. Public notice, there's a public hearing for this, we have a public hearing tonight for this application. This is for a on and off premise beer wine liquor permit for the headquarters LLC. Uh, the bar and grill, fresh on going to town, it'd be just south of Dairy Queen, so. Strip all there up north into that. Say, say it does not end up limited on liquor license, I would wear it at this time. This would only be the second one of this, or no third one, this may be two other locations that have this, the bigger. This is the third location for that. That we didn't have any issue with this.
Okay, anybody have any questions on this?
Is there different classes? Of licenses?
You'd have, if you go on the first pages there, just check the boxes there, so. At worst, we keep it pretty simple, you have the different ones here, like wholesale, on off, beer. Wine liquor, retail off premise. Uh, retail club. Basically, it's on or off or both.
Yeah.
So like liquor store. Or a bar, or a bar that may sell liquor.
So in this case, this is a bar that can sell liquor and can also sell also?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is just to clarify, is this just a one, oh, sorry, is it a one-time fee or how does, how does it work?
Uh, they, they, an application fee.
Okay.
Percentage of the liquor license, it is thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, that's the one time fee, the angle fee is what you see up there on the screen, one thousand five hundred and fifty, that's a angle fee.
Okay, okay.
And that's, I believe, set by a century ago. Uh, our application fees are fairly. Low in cost, very expensive, uh, you'd see like some other cities like Barrow, for example, they have many different levels and different application fees. And the costs. I, I don't know exactly anything, only go up significantly, also eighty or a hundred thousand dollars, I know the type of establishment, so. Uh, we keep it pretty simple.
Okay, any questions on this one?
So Mr. Mayor, for this, and we, just the new license, we have to publish notice. Uh, for this hearing, so you wanna open up the hearing for any comment?
We'll open it up for public hearing on this application, anybody? You wanna talk about, what's it? It's going twice. Brett, Lucas, I'll close the public hearing. Um, anybody have any other comments on this one? Pretty much so, we're played cut and dry, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Horace HQ.
Okay. Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second?
Sure, I will, second.
Does a second? Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can carries, okay. Jim, you got an update?
I do, there's some good news, I'll give you the letter related, but. The whole of the dog for the meter vault is, the base was poured last week. And today they made one of two connections to the missing water main on sixty-third, so.
Am I allowed to do a happy dancer?
Yes, you are. That's actually amazing, given the weather conditions.
So they have been looking out there for some time, they feel it's so.
And they're sure that they're not gonna, you know, you mentioned, do it too early, that it could.
So.
Break the.
So they, uh, the wall was done, we get to the cross, it's eight feet deep, actually it's probably ten feet by the side and you get, uh. Get down to the bottom, there's no cross down there, the area was blockaded, they set it up twice the past week, it's in the under blanket.
Okay, because if something happens.
It's, it's under a blanket and, um, they have, right now, the craze is catching for Friday to set the hall. We'll see what. Yeah, it's a rather big structures, I'm pretty sure that if it's windy and considering it's a year and a half, it's usually bad, I'm pretty sure they're not gonna progress.
Yeah, another year or two is not gonna make.
We might need some video of this.
There, um, the people have been assigned to take fifteen look at. So, um, anyway, the plan was a very on Friday, um, they're dependent, obviously, and they were able to get, like I said, one crossing done on sixty hundred today. And then everyone was, it's gonna be whatever depending to, there was, I swear they did it on tomorrow, but. I don't think that's gonna be a deal, so. Um, there's some good news, good news on that front. Um, we did have, um. The contracts have been distributed for sixty-sixth street, we haven't got them back yet, we've got a little pre-construction conference, anything like that. So, we obviously have approved, and we've been building and working on both of those, trying to address everything. Um, Cup Creek continues, kind of slowly but surely, right now, it's moving on more slowly, moving towards, that's the nature of it. Uh, Box Culver for the crossing, the green twenty-seven is in, um. It was a deep sanitary sewer out there, uh, lift station, they're gonna install next, because that, they could drink through the frost, and they just, they bad habit. But they used to be pushing on the bath and, um. That's where we're at with that, so we talked about it on the board, from the digital meeting, each one else, so. So I got there, you know?
Excellent work, Jim.
Jim, have they said anything about fifty-second avenue, uh, the.
Is it's got a liberty with us, once you start, you have to continue.
Right.
So it's gonna start later on this year, this summer, we get new one, but here, all the materials that they need, get that all staged. And then tear into it.
So what I heard at one point, they were gonna do sixty-fourth, not, then they were gonna do the bridge, and then they were gonna do the roundabout, are they gonna try and do the fifty-second?
The fifty-second roundabout.
So, okay, got it.
Bridge and the other one are done for that.
Gotcha, okay.
A little more Monday, but.
Yeah, okay, I'm just curious, I know they were talking about that, doing them staging it like that, okay. Uh, Brenton, what do you got?
Couple updates for you, one is tax, like, tax equalization meeting, it's next. Their next council meeting, so April seventeen at five thirty here, so. Um, that'll be Paul Tocasi will come down, talk about valuations. And you have a chance for anybody to want to feel their valuation, so they can identify their concerns, turn down with the council. And a lot of times what Paul will do is he'll get their name, address, over to the back of your room. Talk about their concerns, if needs to set a meeting with them, he'll set a meeting with them. Well, that's sort of the council, serve the valuations, mine is so and so a bit of a. Uh, just a heads up for you on that one, reminder. Uh, also road restrictions for over-dimensional vehicles start tomorrow. Uh, we are, we follow the same timelines for college, for college uses for that. Uh, what that means is permits are more expensive for. Folks can haul. Oversized, so. So, we have to get a permit to do that, and there's, the restrictions are lower here, or. Important weight restrictions are lower, so. The weight restrictions, or weights that are allowed on the road are lower, which is more restrictive. Sorry, it's kind of backwards, I feel. Um, Easter event, we have Easter egg hunt on Saturday. Uh, we had a fairly good turnout, thank you to everybody that participated and helped out, most attended. Uh, we were able to bear through the snow, we had went to Snowville Club, they had the Snowville Trail Gruber and packed down the snow at Orson Thre. It actually worked out really well, uh, so the kids were doing Easter hunt about to be the snow. I didn't see anybody sitting in during national.
Not at all.
So, uh, we had a couple of excited kids that. Comeled into the snow. There were a lot, there were a lot of happy faces, a lot of happy kids, uh, I know. The church, they had the activities going on, sorry, here from two to three. Their content was at three, uh, a lot of kids are going inside doing coloring. Coloring sheets and temporary tattoos, they had fun with that. Uh, we had the Snowville Trail Gruber, the Snowville Club. Uh, out there, waste management brought a garbage truck out there, candy for the kids, horse fires out there with a couple fire trucks and some. Free things for the kids there too, so. Little bit going on, and like I said, we had a pretty good turnout, very similar numbers probably last year, a little bit more, but it was very about the same one we had last year. So, uh, we were very happy with that, I think we had. Uh, a more normal spring, probably would have had a lot bigger attendance than what we had, so. We got to work out, it's a lot of happy faces and kids, from the kids.
Over twenty-two thousand eggs were taken care of in eleven minutes and twenty seconds.
Yep.
It's longer every year.
No.
You spread it out.
No, only my kids clean their roots.
Right? And a little vacuum cleaners up there, it was great.
Um, and then another one I have is, uh. Um, just a reminder for everybody with, obviously, all that extra snow that we have this year, rain melting. Um, probably going to see more streets flood, flooding at times or different areas, flood. Typically worse than did as bad as other places, but with all this snow. Let's hope for a slow melt. And keep the area clean as much as possible, and all colors looks has been out over the last, if you're so, trying to steam out. The storm sewer drains, that does help the water flow, but. There are ready points where there are standing blockers, so. We have talked to one area, uh, and we need to talk with them and clearly address it today, so.
Okay, I just. I, I just wanna say, you know, we're gonna have, if we're gonna have private streets. I, I do want this, I think it's important that we get the private street signs up. So that the city staff is not getting complaints. Um, about them, about them, um, because I hate to see them being blamed for. Issues that we're having on these private roads, um, and I also feel as a council member. You know, when it comes to these private roads, if, if we're, you know, if they're not gonna be able, I've had problems even over by the Dairy Queen. And if we're not gonna have people taking care of them properly, then in the future, I'm not sure that I want to move forward with private roads. And honestly, I don't know what the point of them is anyways, besides skirting around the requirements, um. That we have, for the, for the roads and the sidewalks, and so I, I'm not sure how I feel about that right now, I was really disappointed. Getting a few calls yesterday, was it yesterday or Sunday, um, dealing with these private drives, so that's what I have to say about that.
Oh, very fun, and you're right, like I said, you're gonna have some street flooding from time to time. Uh, this time of year, uh, but in the situation, as Mary Burke was talking about, we had some, uh, street flooding on private street. Brought to the developers' pension today, and they are out there, take care of. Brought to the developer's pension today, and they are out there, take care of it, they said that they gotta clear it up now. We, like I said, we do have it, it happened on state streets too. Uh, so so we try to clear it up as much as we can, sometimes we're able to win the battle, sometimes we can't.
Oh, and I understand, yeah, the weather, you know, that we can't stop melting. But we do have to take care of the roads and, you know, when I talk about my issues that I've had over by that private drive by the Dairy Queen too. That road has not been filed the way it should, and it's very frustrating.
I agree with that, I've seen people get buried over there more than once.
It's 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 ridiculous, in my opinion, especially when we have businesses over there, you need a, you need a road that you can dive on, so. Um, if you could follow up with them too, I know snow's gonna be melting, but in the, you know, back season, I don't really wanna see that again.
And is there, speaking of that road, I kind of agree, I actually was just back there the other day too, is there, is there gonna be a si- is there a sidewalk? On the. On the east side, the the apartment building side? There's an apart, there there will be a sidewalk there? Okay, okay, you can't, I can't really tell, cuz it's messy. I assumed, okay.
But there will be, and it's planned on that east side.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, see, on portfolio reports, uh, we've been in contact with our state representatives, there's a couple of bills we're keeping an eye on. Um, hopefully one of them or both of those go down in flames, but we'll see what happens here, but we're gonna keep an eye on them. Um, just kind of, everybody kind of knows we've got a snow event coming here on Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, I'm sure the public works guys are gonna try and stay up with it, but we are expecting, you know, over a foot of snow with this deal, so. Keeping up with this when the wind gets excessive is gonna be difficult, so I'd advise everybody to stay home. Probably on Wednesday and not try and venture out, we'll try and keep the roads as best we can, but uh, it's gonna go beyond us as well, so. Uh, the other thing I'll just re- mentioned, I mentioned it last time, uh, chances of a flood event are increasing and probably will increase more after this event. Uh, I believe the county is having a couple of meetings on this, or have had one, and probably have a few more. Understand that the sandbag central is gonna be doing a hundred thousand sandbags, of which sixty thousand will be. Went out to the rural areas. Um, well, that's kinda keep an eye on, and I know the sandbags can't freeze, so that's why they keep them where they are, but uh, well, let's keep and keep an eye on that, because. If this turns out to be like a two thousand and nine, we have people in our southwest part of the city will be involved, and probably some flooding, so let's keep an eye on it. See where it goes, alright, enough of that, Sarah.
We're mentioning sandbags, I did check the public works today, about fifteen hundred sandbags, they checked. Be a very able to get more, so we are getting more, it sounds like, uh, and sand. We'll be looking to have some of that available. Probably goes, um. But we wanted to do this most often.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that's why we're focused on one, those switch gears, it's not much snow we get, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
So the last couple of weeks has just been extensive meetings on client review. Um, trying to make sure that we're doing the very best we can for the beautification of our city. And spending tax dollars wisely, which is very important to me personally, along with everyone else here. Um, above and beyond that, I spent some time out in Capri today, watching four dozers move some dirt. And uh, I had a chance to go over and take a look at the vault, and I went and checked on a couple of our lift stations and accessibility. Because I too am very concerned about high waters rising, and I wanna make sure that we can get to these locations. Brett and me and I have a conversation, I have sent a couple of text messages over to Adam with a couple areas that we need to access. Um, pretty impressed with some of the new designs coming in with some of the lift gates for flood protection in our area. Um, pretty excited about some of those things, and really excited to be a part of it, so. Um, I did attend Easter event, it was awesome, really, really awesome, loved to see the little kids having a great time and uh. Looking forward to staying home with my daughter for the next two days, cuz they're all. That's all I have.
Right, tell me, what do you got?
Um, I guess we have a. Joint session coming up next, is it next week?
Tuesday.
Yep, Tuesday. Uh, so we're gonna be meeting with the planning and zoning, um, group. To kind of go over those ordinances, so looking forward to that discussion. Um, is that, that's open to the public, so if you guys wanna come to that, you sure can. Um, and then I was just gonna say to Brent over in that area that I was talking about, it is a disaster with that construction. It. I don't know why it's, it looks terrible, if we could maybe tell them. Button it up a little bit, that'd be great. But that's all I got. And I didn't get to go to the Easter, but my son did, and we had a lot of.
Yep, it was a very, it was a great event, and we had wonderful sponsors too. Onsted Twitchell and Interstate Engineering were two big sponsors, so appreciate that very much, um. That's the first Easter event that I've attended, and my my funny observation afterwards was. There was very little cleanup, because those kids made sure that every single egg. Was accounted for and opened in case it had a ticket for a good prize, so literally walking that whole area. All along in front of the church and on the north side, not not even a, not even a Teflon candy wrapper. Sarah, do you agree? It was hilarious.
It was remarkable.
It was remarkable, so anyway, it was, it was a really good time and a good event, um, well attended, so, and we just continue to work on our hundred and fiftieth. Um, with some various uh committees and subcommittees, so that's what's been taking up my time, that's all I have.
Alright, so we've got a couple of executive sessions, we're gonna have to go on here too, so I'll read the first one, executive session, all pursuant of NDCC. Four four D F O four dash nineteen point one nine, discuss negotiating strategy and provide negotiating instructions. Our attorney and negotiating and negotiator regarding contracts for the purchase of the real property related to the end. Real property, we'll take five minutes here and regroup and then come back and start our executive sessions.